I'm going to call the Wednesday, March 5th, meeting of the Hamilton County Council to Order. Mr. Auditor may have a roll call.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Tim Griffin.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mark Hall.
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Today, the invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Tim Griffin.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. Grant us the wisdom in our decisions so we may best serve the citizens of Hamilton County. We give thanks to our military, past and present, and ask for your protection for them and their families. As we begin this season of Lent on this Ash Wednesday, may I ask this be a time for reflection, renewal, and service to others? I'd also like to have a moment of silence for Mason Alexander, who was the student who passed away this past weekend in a car crash. Thank you, and in your name we pray, amen. And for the pledge, if I could ask the scouts to please come up here and lead us. I think they'll do a better job than I will.
Come on up here.
We've got several scouts in attendance tonight.
Come up here and lead us in the pledge.
Pledge right back.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have to read an approval of the minutes. The first one is the memoranda of the February.
Motion to combine all three and approve.
Second.
Do I have a motion to approve all?
So moved. Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Moving on, public comments for anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we have committee and officers' reports. Note to fellow council members, we will be, a reminder, we will be meeting very briefly after this meeting in an executive session to discuss a personnel approval item, and it should only take a few minutes. That's all I have. Vice President.
Steve. No report. The only thing I had, Councilor, is be prepared to look at and approve budget instructions at the next meeting, at April.
Highway.
We met, and there's not many items left to talk about, but you'll be getting a report on all the projects that we haven't seen probably a while. It'll be provided to you here, if it hasn't already.
Thank you. Finance.
Finance had a meeting yesterday. A lot of it, Mike just went over in our work session. The results of minutes, review the minutes, that's kind of where our preemptive bonding might come from. And any questions, call me.
Thank you. Personnel.
Poll, correct? Yes.
Major projects.
We met, and there's a, I would call it a list of major projects that we're going to be select, that we're going to be passing around. Obviously, we just talked about it in our executive session.
Thank you. And anything else?
One real quick, one of our county employees, this past week, came across the car fire. Doesn't know I was going to say anything about this. Stopped and put out, helped put out the car fire with an extinguisher, so Jason Leiser from Health Department, so, you know, as a firefighter, and he's a former volunteer firefighter, stopped. Just the importance of having those fire extinguishers, I thought, when our county employees, and this is, you know, we have employees that do this stuff all the time, great stuff. So if you hear about it, let us know, because I wanted to, you know, say thank you to him and all the other employees that do things like that, so.
Madam President, just a reminder, I will be virtual for April, and so I apologize, and so will Ken, so we apologize that we'll do roll calls for all of that. So sorry, Mr. Auditor.
You don't look very sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Next, unfinished business and table business, seeing none, moving on to new business, one approval of underpinnings.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Number two, an update from the Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District on programs for invasive species, Ms. Claire Land.
Hi, I'm Claire, the urban conservationist at Soil and Water. Wanted to give you guys an update on HIP, which is the Hamilton County Invasive Partnership. It is the CISM, Cooperative Invasive Species Management Area, for the county. One of our big projects right now. If you're not as familiar with it, it's kind of an umbrella organization, building a coalition of organizations doing invasive species work across the county, and then we're also there to mobilize volunteers. So we put together our first-ever annual report, which you guys have a copy of, which we're really proud of. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that you will find in there. But we had volunteer time just on HIP projects that valued over $30,000 in 2024. Thirty volunteer events with a value of that volunteer labor of over $96,000. Our trade-in program was featured on Science Friday, which is a national public radio program and podcast that has over 1.8 million listeners per week. That's where people can remove invasives from their yard and apply to get free native replacements. HIPMAP is kind of one of our landmark projects within HIP. It's a really great example of departments collaborating together to build something, GIS, Soil and Water, Carmel Parks, and also county parks. It's a mapping system where we can track invasive species, their density, where they all are across the county, and also the management practices that we're applying as well. So one of the biggest users of that program is the county parks department, and they always have a lot of great feedback about how it's impacting their strategic decision-making as far as land management on county parks properties, and that saves time and money from staff, but also less herbicides being used, being used more effectively, and just overall better land management. We have nineteen park stewards working at thirteen different parks across the county, and last year we brought in $80,000 in grants, and most of that is turned directly back around to landowners in the county as cost share for invasive species removal. So you'll find more about our programs in there, not to brag, but I did come here to brag that we have the best CISM in the state, we just really do. A lot of other CSMs or counties would be happy if, like, they were doing one of these programs. So when you look through here, I think it's pretty powerful, the impact it's had to bring everyone together and also bring those volunteers and mobilize them. So the other exciting thing is that it's Invasive Species Aware, well, Action Month in Hamilton County. The commissioners proclaimed that for us at their last meeting, so you guys also have a list of volunteer events for the spring, if anyone else is interested to, at all kinds of different parks, properties across the county. Lots of volunteer events, educational events, a lot of information on our website and on social media that we would love for people to comment on or share, so we can get that message out to more people. But yeah, it's been a really fantastic program over the last five years, has really grown, and one we're really proud of, so I wanted to make sure to give you guys an update.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I was going to mention one thing. I'm working with Connor Prairie, they just had some company come through and did a bunch of invasive, I tried to give them your name, I'm not sure if they ever reached out, but they're, they're doing a work with Department of Natural Resources to create the indoor fee program and have some stream remediation as well as wetland remediation. So they just came through and had some huge piece of equipment that came through and wiped a bunch of that stuff out. I'm not sure if you've used Ecologic before.
Yes, yeah, they're great. Yeah, they're, they're a good partner in HIP, Ecologic, but Connor Prairie, and they use HIPMAP as well, we got them trained on that, so they're, they even hired an intern to help them map invasive species. So that really helps with the strategic management, to be able to use those dollars effectively.
Thanks, thanks, Claire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Hamilton County Libraries for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program.
So everyone, I think, had this up, it's in the packet, it's been presented before. I think you'll see it inside there, they're going to talk about it, but there's a number of, I think, I'm guessing there's a large number of people that are actually here for this tonight, but there's layers of support, and I'm sure they'll get to it. The program itself, if you haven't already read up on some of the material. Cheryl, that's as good as I can do, you're going to have to take it there.
Okay, thanks, sorry. Good evening, councilors, and hello from Dolly. She sends her love and gratitude for dedication to education, philanthropy, and family. My name is Cheryl Solars, I'm the Director of the Westfield, Washington Public Library. Also in attendance this evening are the Directors of the four other libraries in Hamilton County, Bob Swainy, the Carmel Clay Public Library, Melissa Loyzelle from the Hamilton East Public Libraries, Stacy Trees from the Hamilton North Public Library, Kim Riley from the Sheridan Public Library. Also in attendance is Katie Mullins from the Community Engagement Coordinator of the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library of Indiana, and some of our foundation library, or foundation directors are also in attendance. Many people know about Dollywood. The Dollywood Foundation is a philanthropic arm of Dolly's success, flagship program at the Dollywood Foundation, is Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which Dolly started in 1995 in honor of her father. She says that her dad was the smartest man she ever knew, and just imagine how far he could have gone in life if he could read and write. It is a grassroots book gifting community program that mails to the child's home a high-quality, age-appropriate book at no cost to the family. A key aspect is that all children in the community, no matter their family income, are eligible. It is an inclusive program rooted in personal experience by Dolly, from the stigma of poverty, poverty, so it is important to her that all, that this is a gift for all. As soon as a child is born, they can be registered and will, will then be receiving one book a month for a total of sixty books, sixty books, by the time they turn five years old. Books are selected by a blue-ribbon selection committee. The, the program currently mails over three million books a month, that's more than one book per second, and since the start of the program, they have gifted over a quarter of a billion books. Why it matters, the Commission of Read, the Commission on Reading stated, "The single most important activity for building knowledge required for eventual success in reading is reading aloud to children." Dolly Parton Imagination Library impact affects families and children on many fronts. Improved kindergarten readiness, 28.9% increase in the readiness for kindergarten, significant stronger reading, math, science, and achievement tests consistently from kindergarten through the ninth grade, creates a home literacy environment. Reading together helps to create a bond, a unique shared experience, provides connection between child and caregivers, or other family members and siblings. Sense of ownership and pride, books belong to the child. Frequency happens every month. Family connections and resilience. Family connections and resilience. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library increases reading three times a week from 59%, 59.7% to 82 points, or 83.2%, 85.2%. Increased reading multiple times in the same day, building a home library, 60 if you enroll the child when, when they are born. Increase, it increases one-on-one time, laying the foundation for adults' consistent involvement in their children's learning and development. Establishment of reading routines brings about increased stability, emotional well-being, and improved atmosphere in families. In community, a healing effect manifesting in emerging neighborhood initiatives, increase the library usage and literacy focus, provides ties to adult literacy, dual-language learner programs, creates a shared bond among children, especially important when starting kindergarten. Levels of education playing field of those children receiving the Imagination Library books. Why it matters, love. What sets, what sets this program apart from other literacy programs is that the focus is on inspiring a love of reading. Literacy is one of the outcomes, but many other magical things happen when a child receives a book in the mail. Major excitement to see it with their name on it, which created a sense of ownership and pride, snuggling up with a trusted adult to read it, and we found more frequent visitor, visits to the public library. Other library members are engaged in reading, not only are, not only creating bonds with adults, but also among other children, which impacts the big step of going into kindergartens. Currently in Indiana, 124,992 children will receive a book from Imagination Library, which is 31% of our eligible population of children under age five. While we've gone, while we've had programs for years and years, decades for some, the General Assembly voted in 2023 to approve legislation that would allocate over $6 million over the next two years towards this, towards the statewide expansion of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, with the Indiana State Library as the state program sponsor. This bill provides 50% match to all local program partners for the cost of the books. Now, $1.30, $1.30 per child per month for books and mailing, allowing local communities to essentially serve twice as many children. Just over 34 county programs have been added, added, and more than 55,000 new children are receiving books. Currently, Indiana has eighty-eight full operating counties, three partially covered, which I just learned this evening that Marion and Lake are already covered now, so that puts that down to one partially covered, and just one that does not have an active program, which is our county, Hamilton. Next month, we will reach, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library will reach 2 million books gifted to Hoover children since August of 2023. This brings us to why we are here tonight, to ask for funding for the local annual cost. Assuming the state will continue to fund the other 50%, I know Governor Braun has tasked Mrs. Braun to find a way to keep that funding going after June 2025. This slide outlines the potential cost. Based on significant growth in the first 12 to 18 months, then average gradual growth over the next three and a half years. So the total cost for books and mailing is $2.60 per book, per child, per month, which is column three on this slide. The local cost is $1.30 per child, per month, due to the state's match of 50%. There are 21,085 children under the age of five in Hamilton County. The Dollywood Foundation has found that and. The Dollywood Foundation has found that, and on average, a program can successfully enroll about sixty-five percent of their total population under the age of five in about four years. So, meaning that sixty-five percent of the twenty-one thousand eight hundred and, or twenty-one thousand eighty-five would be thirteen thousand seven hundred and five. So when it's fully, when the sixty-five percent of that, it would be for the Hamilton County cost, annual cost would be ninety-six thousand in 2029, and then two hundred and thirteen thousand in eight hundred and forty in 2030. Because they imagine like in the 2025 and 2026, it'd be about forty percent of that sixty-five percent. It's a lot of percents there. This is how, this shows, this slide shows how each role works together to keep the books moving. You can see the responsibilities of the local partner on the left, and the responsibilities of the Dollywood Foundation. The Dollywood Foundation on the right, and they are connected through the database at the top to register the children, and the post office at the bottom to deliver the books. What we are proposing is that the county council would provide the local funds of a dollar thirty per child per month. The Carmel Clay Library Foundation has already secured a grant of seventy-five thousand from the Centerpoint Energy to help start this program in Hamilton County. The Carmel Clay Library Foundation has volunteers ready to administer their program for the entire county. All five Hamilton County libraries will promote the program on social media and links on their library websites, help families sign up, and work with local post office on undelivered books. We're excited to get the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Program off the ground in Hamilton County. As Dolly says, you can never have enough books in the hands of enough children. So we would love to have the Hamilton County Council's financial support. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer.
Any questions?
When are they coming back for funding? I'm just kidding. Next month? Yeah?
When is the request for funding?
Yeah, when will, so when do you want to start this? And when will you come back? And when will there be knowledge of how the state's moving forward or not with their match?
Well, we would know at the end of the legislature, I'm sure, what's going on there with the funding. We are ready to accept funds at any time, whenever you would be ready, or can be ready. We'll come back also periodically with any kind of, if this is funded, and we'll come back to the council and prepare, or give you statistics of how the program's working, where the kids have signed up, and all of that, any demographic information.
And if our, and it's being, will be implemented by the Carmel Education?
The Carmel Library Foundation.
So they would be the recipient of the funds from the?
That would be something that we would need to discuss because we can do it, there's different ways we can do it, we can set up a fund ourselves and do that. And then, or we could work through the community, the Hamilton County Foundation, Community Foundation as well, and they could create a fund.
Councilor, I think I'd ask, is this an interlocal that we'd have to go into?
Yeah, maybe else.
Yeah.
Sorry, yes.
All right, so we did get an interlocal in place, and once the interlocal's in place, then we can fund it.
And then also in September, when we do our non-for-profit, well, funding, you could ultimately, like, so you could, potentially, we could approve once the interlocal's done through the end of this year to support, and then you come back for non-for-profit approval, if you will, for 2026.
Would you be willing to come back for subsequent years' approval through the non-for-profit grants we offer?
Well, I would.
Are you looking for it to be?
I'm looking for, what I see is an opportunity for us to invest, it's a 501(c)(3).
Yeah.
So it's investing, like we did, no differently than when we set up the, invest Hamilton County, or what's it called now? The education, we changed names three times. But when we set that up, we set it up as a three-year commitment to say, we're gonna back this.
Pursuit Institute.
Pursuit Institute.
Okay.
We set that up, we set that up as a three-year program to fund it and to work to get the funding in place that would be able to carry it forward. Will that be everything? No, probably not, but at the same time, it allows the 501(c)(3) to be focused on getting the donations coming, setting up the organization, working on trying to advocate for persons like ourselves or other communities that might want to invest in it. And then, but we made an investment for a period of time that gets them through there, and then at that point in time, they'd come back and ask for whatever gap might be.
Don't we already have a vehicle in the process for this? We have the non-for-profit grants annually. I admittedly, we should do something this year, but they should come back and go through the same process we're asking all the other nonprofits to do.
I'm not opposed, though, to him doing the setup for the three years, and then from there, they would come back. So if you get, if you have the interlocal that ultimately reflects three years, to help stand it up. And then from there, they can come back through the normal channel, as you mentioned, through the non-for-profit committee.
Yeah, it becomes not fair to the other fifty non-for-profits that apply.
Well, this is, the nonprofits that are out there, this is going to an organization that the county kind of funds, libraries. So it's a little bit different than what I would say are nonprofits.
Libraries have their own budgets.
I appreciate that.
We already have a process, was my point. I'm agreeing, it's a great idea, stand it up, but we can't put ourselves in a position to discriminate against the other fifty non-for-profits that apply.
I don't disagree, work on an interlocal to fund through the end of the year, but they need to get on the list with all the other nonprofits.
I still think, I like the three-year idea, and then from there, move forward. But get the interlocal done in a different manner, and move forward.
So we have two ideas, one is to do an inter?
Let's set up both, we'll do both.
Do both.
Interlocal for both, we'll talk, maybe in executive session, and then we'll move forward with one at the next council meeting.
But we know for this year, the interlocal will start working.
That's okay.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you need anything, let me know.
I will.
Happy to help.
Oh, and just for your benefit, we are, our libraries are helping, also helping, let's head along.
Thank you.
Anybody, you wanna let anybody that's with the library go?
If anyone else is here for libraries that would like to leave or not stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to do so.
We won't be mad.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number CC-03052025.a. An ordinance of the County Council of Hamilton County, Indiana, approving a lease agreement with issuance of bonds related to public safety training facility project.
Good evening, Council.
Second.
Now discussion.
Sorry, good evening, Council, Zach Clutch with the Tap Law Firm and Bond Counsel to the county. Pleasant antipathy following Dolly Parton and children and books, but I'll do the best I can. Before you, it's an ordinance that arises from the public safety training facility project that we've discussed on several occasions. And just by way of a very brief background, this is the project that this body made a preliminary determination in fall of 2024 to move forward. Just a preliminary determination, you conducted two hearings, and a resolution was adopted on September 4th. Subsequent to that, on February 10th, the Board of Commissioners for Hamilton County conducted a hearing on this lease, a public hearing on the lease, and also approved the lease and approved the project. And the following day, on February 11th, the Hamilton County Public Building Corp. authorized the issuance of bonds to help fund the project and approved the lease agreement. We're now here at the final step, which is a statutory process to seek the fiscal body's approval of both the lease, I'm sorry, of each of the lease, the issuance of bonds by the building corp, and the project itself. And those three approvals are embodied in this ordinance before you. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the county's municipal financial advisors here as well, if there's any questions that you may have.
I'd make a motion to vote on it.
We already have one on the floor.
We've already got a motion, sir.
Yeah, so it's in.
Call any questions, Clinton? Okay, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is discussion of the US-31 Infrastructure Project Phase Three. Mr. Sullivan is here to, oh, it's Mr. Wood.
Yes, thank you, Councilmembers, we have before you for discussion tonight, a discussion for the US-31 Infrastructure Project Phase Three. Steve Wood and Wesley Engineering are here for any questions. The request is for ten million dollars to build infrastructure out towards the east of US-31 into the Jackson Township area, not Adams Township. I know that was a point of confusion or discussion earlier. This matter has been discussed with council in executive session prior. But if there's any more detail that the council would like, Mr. Wood or Marty Westler or CJ Taylor, the Utilities General Manager, are here to provide those.
Mr. Sullivan, this is only for discussion, right? There's no vote, okay.
No, it's just.
I was like, you're asking for ten million, I was, that's not on the agenda for that, okay.
You are correct, Councilwoman Masalma, it is just, it was something that we've, it's been discussed at joint commissioner-council meetings, it's been discussed by the Major Projects Committee twice now. After we had the Major Projects Committee's last meeting, it was after the point of getting on to the council's agenda for appropriation, but we just wanted to make sure that we kept the conversation going with you all, and answer any questions that may have not been answered by in previous joint meetings or by the Major Projects Committee.
And I think the Major Projects, the unanimous support for this project, before I come up, correct? Is that the thing you said?
Yeah, that's correct. I do think, though, from a finance perspective, there are discussions.
We discussed this in the Finance Committee, and here's, I'll say it's my reservation. We're already on the hook for a bunch of money on this project. We've already got pipes in the ground. This is an expansion of the project to get us further into Jackson Township. It is my opinion that we should wait and see what the legislature does to us, because we're betting on, this ten million dollars, we're betting on future growth. What is the legislation gonna do for growing communities like we're hoping to serve as opposed to us putting ten million dollars in pipes in the ground and the environment for future growth gets stymied with legislation? Got any words of wisdom there for me?
So I will say, the plan of this has changed. Well, to pick up a community up there in that area, Twilight Hills, that is in desperate need of sewer water.
It exists right now.
It exists right now.
These are questions.
So what we've done is we moved it for, that project with the other project was gonna be around fourteen million dollars. So we combined both projects into one to run it and come across and bring it down to 236 to help out, eventually help out Cisro, when you're correct on how you're doing it. But part of this project does, and I will hand this out to everybody.
No, no, you don't have to pull.
Okay. Right. Yeah, two hundred, it's gonna come across 241st Street. It's gonna drop down to help the Twilight Hills, it's gonna come across to Anthony Road, come across down to 236. My only thing I want to stress to you is, while you're thinking about this, is that Twilight Hills has been a constant coming to us about getting service to them. Mr. Hall is aware of it as well.
How many residences are in that existing community?
I think it's, Marty? Fifteen that want the service, that need the service.
Okay.
Okay.
This is ten million dollars.
I just needed to point that out to you.
I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm just saying, we've got, between the plant and the pipe in the ground, we've got, what, fifty, sixty million dollars in this sewer plant?
The Councilman Beaver, that is correct, but very fortunately, thirty million of that is coming from a grant from the state of Indiana, and twenty-five million of that was from the federal government.
Councilor, I'm well aware of the financing.
Oh, I know, I know, you've been through the thick and thin of it.
And, and not only that, we're paying two point three million dollars in carrying costs on this, we're gonna appropriate tonight to carry this project because it's at the final stages of completion, but there's no flesh and toilets right now. And what you're asking for is another ten, betting on future development. And what I'm saying to you, I'm concerned that the legislature may make an environment where future growth is stymied somewhat. That's my concern in a nutshell.
With regards to the finance, no, because I had asked that question. Did we, we had it set aside, but it was to be paid in the future. There was something you had indicated that you and finance had talked about, long-term, sorry.
Oh, yeah, if we do go ahead with it, there'll be long-term bonds, we were talking about short-term bonds. This would be, of course, be a long-term bond. You understand what my concern is?
Totally, one hundred percent. I think, Councilman Beaver to you, it's, Councilman Hall actually made the point very early in his tenure about making sure that the utility district pays the county back for expenses, and that was one of the first things he actually did, if you remember Councilman Hall, that we put that in the original interlocal agreement. And so, as it stands right now, the investment would be moving towards Cisro. Cisro's going through their comprehensive plan right now. It's a very robust process, I actually live in Jackson Township, so I hear all about, I get the notices and stuff, all the things that they're looking at. And so this would get, move us closer to Cisro, which could help Cisro if they were to have needs in the future. It just, it puts it in a spot where it is ready for that to happen, to capture users as they come about, instead of acting after the fact, after they're there. The problem we may run into is that, if developments were to occur in Cisro-Jackson Township planning and are approved by their planning commission, not ours, if we don't have infrastructure in the area or onsite or whatever it is, they could do their own septics, and at that point in time, we may not be able to get those.
I took that, and somebody brought that up, I took that, but remember that a house with a septic system touches the county on a couple of different occasions, with the surveyor and the health department also. So it's not like they could just arbitrarily start issuing septic tank permits. I'm not opposed to, I'm just saying, these are my concerns. We will have more discussion about how, if you put it on the agenda for next month, maybe you'll get a vote, maybe you'll get tabled. I'm just saying, this is ten on top of a bunch already. I know things went kinda sideways in Adams. We were counting on things that might not transpire for a longer term. It's a lot of money.
Understandably, sir.
Let me understand, though, this proposal would help us in obtaining possible users that we need?
Yes. That is correct, Councilman Nation, it sets the district up to serve those possible people. If developments, as they occur, we would be ready to go, the sooner they develop, the sooner the utility's ready for all, the sooner the county could get paid back, in theory. But if it's arrived at council, again, we've talked with this about the major, the joint meetings, meetings between the council commissioners previously, we've talked to the Major Projects Committee. Now that we have talked to the Major Projects Committee and discussed it more with you, we will plan to put it on your agenda at the next meeting for that appropriation, and how, if you decide to vote for it or fund it, whether that's through whatever mechanism that is, obviously that's your guys' choice, but we will proceed accordingly.
Can I get a little remedial construction education? With all due respect to your law degree, it's probably gonna be a Mr. Wood question.
That's 501(c)(6).
I drive up 31, I see that pipe that's running on the east side of 31 for us to be able to take services up to the Armory. Isn't it cheaper just to tap into that and go to Twilight Hills?
So, so part of it is, we have to come across, right? So there's two sections, right? We came up the east side of US-31, we came, and then we came across and went up the west side of US-31, right? So we'll come across that and come down 241st, instead of going down 236. We're gonna come across that direction and make that run. So instead of doing 236 and then doing that at the same time, we're gonna do it as one. So that opens up that whole area, also at the same time with development. It saves us cost in the long run for doing one project versus two.
Versus two, so we're already.
You can't use the two sewer pipe that's going through the Armory.
Well, yeah, we are tying into the sewer pipe that's going to the Armory.
So it's built off?
Yeah, yeah, we build off that, come across. So we have, it comes up 231, comes across, I mean, it's multiple directions where we can get both sides.
But your proposal is to, instead of having two projects, to have one?
Correct. And, Councilors, if need be, we can, at the next major project, we can talk about the route as well. There is things that would be, that we'd wanna discuss in the executive session for lay-out purposes, but I believe those are good. And I'm not very good about this land act, I'm trying to keep my mouth shut about it.
Yeah, no, I realize, and, and it was an unforeseen, unforeseeable event after we had started our sewer project. We still need flesh and toilets.
Correct, we do. And the more toilets we can get flushing, the sooner it gets off your guys, off your shoulders. I know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, your councilor?
No, we got, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to open the public hearing for additional appropriations and reductions and transfers. First is Fund One Thousand, General requesting nine million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six thousand, and the amount available is seventy-six million, five hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four. That first item under there is Board of Commissioners additional appropriation request of four hundred thousand.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the additional appropriation of, for County Council, that additional appropriation of two million, seventy-eight thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Additional.
Yes.
Additional appropriation of six million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, a one forty-four amendment of a vacant staff position, we listed it at max for job classification.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is ISSD, additional appropriation request of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, additional appropriation request for one thousand, ten dollars. Do a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is EMA for the one forty-four amendment.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is transfer of appropriation for sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Sheriff, one forty-four amendment, adjustments to vacant positions for part-time and correctional officers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the one forty-four amendment, corrections officer lateral.
So moved.
Second. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is request for approval of changes made to specially pay and lateral entry programs.
So moved.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund eleven twenty-two dash zero zero zero, project income request for reduction of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund eleven fifty-nine for the Health Department, request for additional appropriation of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and one cent.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is transfer of appropriation for seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-nine cents.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is one forty-four amendments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund eleven sixty-one, local public health services, requesting additional appropriation of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is one forty-four amendments.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund one-two-two-two, Communications, one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund forty-eight oh seven, non-reverting computer maintenance, requesting additional appropriation of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighteen cents.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund forty-nine twenty-five F-S-S-A V R Service, requesting additional appropriation of one hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund nine thousand, state and local grant appropriation, transfers and reductions. The first one is nine, Fund ninety, nine, four, zero, three, zero, zero, pre-trial reduction of appropriation of fourteen.
So moved.
Wait a minute here. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Funds fifty, ninety-six, ninety-five oh seven zero zero, two, twenty-twenty-five Problem Solving Grant Drug Port Transfer, appropriation request of thirty-five hundred dollars.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now close the public hearing. Next, we have announcements, Sheriff.
I don't have anything for you guys, thank you.
Councilor, turn.
Nothing for the group?
Mr. Ogden.
Well, if you haven't, I do have. If you haven't heard or read, the Government Finance Officers Association, United States and Canada, has awarded the certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting to the county for our two thousand and twenty-three annual comprehensive report. It's the highest recognition in the area of government and financial accounting that you can receive. And although we're getting consistently thirty-six years in a row. And we're hoping that, and, and this, well, this, this.
It doesn't carry on.
It's been a good ride. Well, I, I guess, the thirty-seventh one's one I'm worried about. This was, you know, former auditor Robin Mills and Deputy Auditor Don Coverdale's gift to us as they left, so. But it takes a lot of work from the auditor staff, Baker Tilly, and everybody else involved, so I just wanted to make sure you knew that and told everybody, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next, we will have, we will adjourn to council executive, to the executive session.
We're gonna, we're gonna hang, sign papers.